Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. You guys are free to go or you can stay. We're going to be talking crunching numbers here in just a little bit. All right. Next on our agenda is, if I have this right, the memorandum for community. Is this right? Right? Okay, this looks different.
Should be.
Yeah. Community policing. Yep, the COPS grant division. You want to come on up, chief?
It's throwing me off. As a matter of discussion, I was reading it wrong.
Agency would like to pursue the same COPS grant that we pursued last year. Unfortunately.
There you go.
Thanks. We would like to pursue the Carl Schinner, Chief of Police. The agency would like to pursue the same COPS grant that we did last year. Unfortunately, we just were not awarded it. What we do know is there's twice as much money being designated this year into the COPS grant system as there was last year. Our grant was strong. It showed collaboration. We had endorsements from elected officials at the federal level, the state level, the local level. The mayor wrote a letter of endorsement for us. There seemed to have been a disproportionate honoring of grants with one's agency about our size receiving seventeen positions last year and us receiving none. We anticipate the grant to be a seventy-five, twenty-five split for three years. We would have to maintain that position for five years if the notice of funding follows the historical guidelines that the COPS office has put out in the past. And those guidelines have been that way for twenty, twenty-five years. So we don't anticipate anything being any different. Dr. Abney has signed on. She's one hundred percent with us, putting a crisis counselor in a cruiser with us, with an officer who will be CIT trained, critically incident trained. And for the council's knowledge, right now about two-thirds of our officers have been to the forty-hour course on how to deal with people who are suicidal, homicidal. And we want to get to the hundred percent mark. COVID has prevented that to some extent, but we're on our way there. The other item there is a grant that requires zero funding from the town. It's for training, for improved training on dealing with people with intellectual and developmental disabilities and who have cognitive disorders who are seniors. We will follow the same narrative. We do not believe that it's going to cost us more than just the price of filling out that grant application. We do use a professional grant writer. She has great success in the DOJ grant area. In fact, that's actually what she does for a living. She writes for the high intensity drug trafficking area out of College Park. And like I said, she's very successful. We believe this will be a trendsetter for Charles County, once we can get this up and running and it's something that we need. As we have preached during COVID, the increase in mental health calls, domestic violence and things such as that, as noted with the email I sent out yesterday about a domestic violence situation that we were able to remedy with some officers who were CIT trained. So we're just, we're asking permission to go ahead and move forward with the grant application.
All right. Thank you. Anything from council?
Madam Mayor. Chief, so you're referencing two grants. You said one is seventy-five, twenty-five split and a zero participation from the town. Is that two different grants?
That's two different grants. The training grant is one that's zero, there's no dollar input from the town. And from our grant writers' perspective, with the training that we've already given our officers and our partnership with the autism, like autism folks like from Pathfinders, gives us a real leg up on that one. It shouldn't take much writing time at all because we're just going to use portions of the grant that we're submitting for the COPS hiring grant to supplement that narrative.
Okay. One other question. And Dr. Abney would be responsible for hiring the social worker, the mental health provider?
Yes, yes. And she has the funds designated to do that. She's just been waiting for somebody to be a partner.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other members of council? Councilman Challenger?
Yes. Good evening, chief. As it leads to this type of program, it sounds unique. It sounds cutting edge. Are there any other areas in Southern Maryland that are employing this opportunity to kind of get beyond the surface level of mental health issues even on behalf of the police department?
Yeah, it's a great question. St. Mary's has a pretty progressive plan and they've been able to do it with state money that just hasn't seemed to make it into Charles County.
Okay. So for Charles County?
We would be the first.
Okay. That's excellent that we're looking at that. And that's definitely, it seems like a long time need for community policing to avoid catastrophic situations. So thanks for spearheading this.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Again, Councilman Jenkins, Ward Four. I just, again, just want to underscore what Councilman Challenger said. This is a great asset to the community. So, and it certainly has unfortunately probably been exacerbated by COVID.
Very much so.
Yeah, and because we see it in other parts of the country. So thanks again for reaching out to the community and engaging. And that's a first-class effort. Thank you.
The, I appreciate those of you who were able to speak to our COLIA assessment team. Last week, I served as the team leader for a agency, the Fort Smith, Arkansas Police Department. They have a, they have a program up and running like we want to bring here. I've already talked to the chief and if we get this grant, we are sending our folks to do some time down there, maybe a couple of days during ride-alongs. The success stories that they have in a very short amount of time, it just, it's the things that you read about that you want to occur in your community. And this would give us the avenue to do that.
Chief, the one thing that you said is that another police department similar to our size receives seventeen grants. What is it that we are missing that would help us get that?
You see the flat spot on my head, Mayor? I'm beating my head on the desk. I wish I knew my grant writer has a very difficult time figuring out. And I reached out to the chief saying, hey, I'm happy for you, but could you share your secrets? So next week at the Police Executives Association in Ossington City, we plan to sit down to have dinner and just kind of go over what they did for their community policing. But they also received ten the year before. So they've received twenty-seven community policing hiring grants in a year. And that's usually what you would see go to Baltimore City or Prince George's County or very, very large jurisdictions.
Would it be helpful if we received letters of support from our delegation, from our state senator?
Absolutely. Like we did last, you know, from Senator Van Hollen to Congressman Hoyer to your letter, the hospital, Dr. Abney, lifestyles. We had some, lack of a better word, I'm a son of a mechanic. We had some horsepower. We had a lot of horsepower. And we really thought we had a good grant. Our grant writer thought it was one of the best she'd ever been a part of writing. And she's been doing it for a long time. So with a lot more grants being available because the administration has put more money into it, we really believe that, well, we're hoping that we'll be Cinderella this time and at least get the one grant we asked for.
Chief, so the grantor did not give you any feedback on your application?
They gave no feedback. And our grant writer has aggressively, and I think that's a good term to use for Lisa, she's aggressively tried to find out. And I've talked to other chiefs in the state, you know, we're a small club, but we talk to each other quite a bit. And most of those who had put in, they got their denial letter, but nothing about how you can improve your application or whatnot. And I guess when you look at, there's eighteen thousand law enforcement agencies in the United States. And even if ten, fifteen percent put in for them, that's a lot of grants to review and give feedback.
Absolutely. So for us, you need a consensus whether or not, do we need to make a motion or is it just a consensus to move forward?
There's a special meeting if you would like to, excuse me.
Gently push it. There we go.
Yeah, I would say it's a special meeting, so you're perfectly able to take a motion.
Okay. I will entertain a motion if anyone so desires to accept the COPS grant, move forward with the COPS grant.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Bryant, Ward, Ward. Sorry? I moved that we move forward with the Department of Justice Community Oriented Policing Services Grant.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We have quite a few seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Okay, going on to our next item on the agenda is board appointments, the commissioned vacancies. Oh, Ms. Phipps? Excellent. Come join us.
I'm hoping I don't have to eat a lot of crow tonight. Madam Mayor and council, I'm here requesting your assistance in soliciting replacements for several of our boards. The La Plata Community Foundation has five vacancies, the first of which is, has been occupied by our previous accounts manager. We're requesting that Kevin Greenville, Town Treasurer, be appointed in her place. There are also four additional board members vacancies that require recruiting from out in the community. And these are for the La Plata, again, the La Plata Community Foundation. The types of directors are defined in the Articles of Incorporation of the La Plata Community Foundation. The Class A Director, as I mentioned, is appointed by the Town Council. We're requesting Kevin Greenville for that position. The Class B Director should be appointed by the La Plata Business Association. Class C Director appointed by the Director of Charles County Department of Social Services. And the Class D Director should be employed by a bank or other similar financial institution. The fifth Director is run by the members of the board. So that'd be the Class E Director.
All right. We'll take this in piecemeal here. Questions from the council?
Madam Mayor, Dave Jenkins from Ward Four. So the current members, they fulfill their terms and they can't be reappointed?
That's correct. They've exceeded their term.
Can they not be reappointed?
No, according to the bylaws, they can only do two terms.
Two terms, okay. So we are in search of four plus the board will do.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, Evelyn Bryant, Ward, Ward Three. Ms. Phipps, who would be responsible for identifying these board members for the La Plata Community Foundation?
That is an excellent question, Madam Councilwoman. Generally, it's not the practice of staff to solicit people for our boards specifically. That would be something that the elected officials would be asked to look out for, see members of the community who might be fitting.
Great. And Mr. Greenville is, he stepped out, so he is.
So he's automatically appointed? Excellent.
If he is willing to do that, that is great. I didn't know if he has already made it go downhill a little bit there. I see, I see your eyes on that one. I do think it is incumbent upon us to reach out to the business associations, social services and financial institution to fill that board. We have potentially a hundred thousand dollars, should this be filled properly, to give out in grants. At the very least, seventy-five hundred dollars that we have had in the past. And so we need to make sure that this is done with people that have, that do not have a conflict of interest, that want to make sure that the nonprofits receive some allocation should they be, I guess, chosen based on their criteria. But this is a very important vacancies to board and commissions to fill. I see, I see the look. What you got?
So the foundation currently has a hundred thousand dollars?
No, it could.
In ARPA funding, we were discussing.
In ARPA funding. In the budget last year, I don't see Kevin, was seventy-five hundred. So it could have up to a hundred thousand. But we were very reluctant to do anything without structure being into the community foundation. So if it is deemed, you know, operational and current, then there is a potential of having ARPA money put in there to help the nonprofits of La Plata. So that is very important to have these vacancies filled.
And that is an important part. It's the, the grants would be to organizations in the town of La Plata, strictly in the town of La Plata.
Only two?
No, no, no. There were limited to, limited to the town of La Plata.
Limited to, which is very important because we have many fantastic nonprofits that could really benefit from grants. What other questions does council have? Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins?
Just, I guess, an observation and then a question. I did notice that the corporation is in good standing because you can go on the Maryland website. So that's, that's a good thing. But I do, and again, not to get in the weeds, but the resident agent would have to be amended and changed.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And then probably for a later discussion or later time, it would be helpful to kind of understand what they've done so far, any projects or, and to be very frank about it, I wouldn't mind seeing any kind of meeting agendas or minutes to kind of understand what they have done or maybe what they could do. And that would just be informational information, I think, that would be helpful.
And I think we did ask, Mr. Greenville was going to provide us with that information and we never received it. So hopefully we'll get it as we go forward.
So it is good that we now have the Articles of Incorporation and we have the bylaws. And that's, that's excellent, but.
So that is the first step on that and then moving forward. So, Mr. Manuel, for, for moving forward on this, do we need to have any type of motion made or just a discussion?
We don't really need a motion, Madam Mayor. The will of council, I think that the town staff could draft a letter relevant to the middle two, which sort of established that the business association and the Department of Social Services, I guess they select their member. So we could make them aware of the necessity to do such, provide a sort of deadline for them to do such. And then as far as the financial institutions go, that may be more of a reaching out to, I'm not sure if they have an organization within town that we could see if there is an interest there. But I don't think it's going to be a problem. But, you know, just to get back to.
In city, we we plan to sit down and have dinner and just kind of go over what they did for their community policing. But they they also received ten the year before. So they've received twenty seven community policing hiring grants in a year. And that's usually what you would see go to Baltimore City or Prince George's County or very, very large jurisdictions.
Would it be helpful if we received letters of support from our delegation, from our state state senator?
Yeah, absolutely. Like we did last, you know, from Senator Van Hollen to Congressman Hoyer to your letter, the hospital, Dr. Abney, lifestyles, we we had some, lack of a better word, I'm a son of a mechanic, we had some horsepower.
Yeah.
We had a lot of horsepower, and we really thought we had a good grant. Our our grant writer thought it was one of the best she'd ever been a part of writing, and she's been doing it for a long time. So with a lot more grants being available because the administration has put more money into it, we really believe that, well, we're hoping that we'll be Cinderella this time and at least get get the one grant we asked for.
Yes, so Chief, so the the grantee grantor did not give you any feedback on your application?
They gave no feedback, and our grant writer has aggressively, and I think that's a good term to use for Lisa, she's aggressively tried to find out, and I've talked to other chiefs in the state, you know, we're we're a small club, but we talk to each other quite a bit. And most of those who had put in, they got their denial letter, but nothing about how you can improve your application or whatnot. And and I guess when you look at there's eighteen thousand law enforcement agencies in the United States, and even if ten fifteen percent put in for them, that's a lot of grants to review and give feedback.
Absolutely. So for us, you need a consensus whether or not, do we need to make a motion, or is it just a consensus to move forward?
There's a special meeting if you would like to, excuse me.
[inaudible]
Yeah, I would say it's a special meeting, so you're perfectly able to take a motion.
Okay, I will entertain a motion if anyone so desires to accept the COPS grant, move forward with the COPS grant.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward, sorry. I I move that we move forward with the Department of Justice Community Oriented Policing Services Grant.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have quite a few seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, going on to our next item on the agenda is board appointments, the commissioned vacancies. Oh, Ms. Phipps, excellent. Come join us.
I'm hoping I don't have to eat a lot of crow tonight. Madam Mayor and Council, I'm here requesting your assistance in soliciting replacements for several of our boards. The La Plata Community Foundation has five vacancies, the first of which is has been occupied by our previous accounts manager. We're requesting that Kevin Greenville, Town Treasurer, be appointed in her place. There are also four additional board members vacancies that require recruiting from out in the community, and these are for the La Plata, again, the La Plata Community Foundation. The types of directors are defined in the Articles of Incorporation of the La Plata Community Foundation. The Class A Director, as I mentioned, is appointed by the Town Council. We're requesting Kevin Greenville for that position. The Class B Director should be appointed by the La Plata Business Association. Class C Director appointed by the Director of Charles County Department of Social Services. And the Class D Director should be employed by a bank or other similar financial institution. The fifth Director is run by the members of the board, so that'd be the Class E Director.
All right, we'll take this in piecemeal here. Questions from the council?
Madam Mayor, Dave Jenkins from Ward Four. So the current members, they either they fulfill their terms and they can't be reappointed?
That's correct. They've exceeded their term.
Okay.
Can they not be reappointed?
No, according according to the bylaws, they can only do two terms.
Two terms, okay. So we are in search of four plus the board will.
Correct.
Do, okay. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Ward Three. Ms. Phipps, who will be responsible for identifying these board members for the La Plata Community Foundation?
That is an excellent question, Madam Councilwoman. Generally, it's not the practice of staff to solicit people for our boards specifically. That would be something that the elected officials would be asked to look out for, see members of the community who might be fitting.
Great. And Mr. Greenville is, he stepped out, so he is.
So he's automatically appointed. Excellent.
If he is willing to do that, that is great. I didn't know if if he has already made it go downhill a little bit there. Now, I see you, I see your eyes on that one. I do think it is incumbent upon us to reach out to the business associations, social services, and financial institution to to fill that board. We have potentially a hundred thousand dollars, should this be filled properly, to give out in grants. At the very least, seventy five hundred dollars that we have had in the past, and so we need to make sure that this is done with people that have that do not have a conflict of interest, that want to make sure that the nonprofits receive some allocation, should they be, I guess, chosen based on their criteria. But this is a very important, important vacancies to board and commissions to to fill. I see, I see the look. What's what you got?
So the foundation currently has a hundred thousand dollars?
No, it could.
In ARPA funding, we were discussing.
In ARPA funding. It in the budget last year, I don't see Kevin, was seventy five hundred.
Yeah.
So it could have up to a hundred thousand, but we were very reluctant to do anything without structure being into the the community foundation. So if it is deemed, you know, operational and current, then there is a potential of having ARPA money put in there to help the nonprofits of La Plata. So that is very important to have these vacancies filled.
And that is an important part, and it's the the grants would be to organizations in the town of La Plata, strictly in the town of La Plata.
Only two?
No, 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 there there were limited to, limited to the town of La Plata.
Limited to, which is very important, because we have many fantastic nonprofits that could really benefit from grants. What other questions does council have? Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins?
Well, just I guess an observation and then a question. I did notice that the the corporation is in good standing, because you can go on the Maryland website, so that's that's a good thing. But I do, and again, not to get in the weeds, but the resident agent will would have to be amended and changed.
Okay, thank you for that.
And then probably for a later discussion or later time, it would be helpful to to kind of understand what they've done so far, any projects or, and to be very frank about it, I wouldn't mind seeing any kind of meeting agendas or minutes to kind of understand what they have done or maybe what they could do. And that would just be informational information, I think, that would be helpful.
And I think we did ask, Mr. Greenville was going to provide us with that information, and we never received it. So hopefully, we'll get it as we go forward.
So it is good that we now have the Articles of Incorporation, and we have the bylaws, and that's that's excellent, but.
So that is the first step on that, and then moving forward. So, Mr. Manuel, for for moving forward on this, do we need to have any type of motion made or just a discussion?
We don't really need a motion, Madam Mayor. The will of council, I think that the town staff could draft a letter relevant to the middle two, which sort of established that the Business Association and the Department of Social Services, I guess they select their member. So we could make them aware of the necessity to do such, provide a sort of deadline for them to do such. And then, as far as the financial institutions go, that may be more of a reaching out to, I'm not sure if they have an organization within town that we could see if there is an interest there, but I don't think it's going to be a problem. But, you know, just to get back to what you, the Councilman Jenkins, were stating, you know, it is a it is a town board, and we need to fill it with bodies, and it may only spend seventy five hundred dollars a year, which is not an insignificant amount of money. But I think it's, you know, we need to, we need to fill the positions.
Madam Mayor, so you said that the Department of Social Services would appoint their person, but it specifically says the Director of the Charles County Department of Social Services.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, just didn't include the director.
And I do believe that the criteria needs to be obviously given to these organizations, but also, one thing is, as as many of the coming up on volunteer, we, as many volunteers know, that you volunteer for one, you seem to volunteer for many, many, so it needs to make sure that there is not a conflict of interest for people that are willing to serve on this board, so that they have to recuse themselves all the time. So that's something to just make them aware of on that.
All right.
Absolutely.
Clarifying question, I know Councilman Jenkins asked about the prior members, so if I'm correct, Mr. Greenville will be the only current and active member as it stands right now. Is that right?
Unless, I guess, potentially, the fifth member who's appointed by the board.
They would need three other members to appoint that fifth member.
But in a roundabout way, they could appoint another town official.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? I think the most important question that we probably haven't asked is, do we want to continue with this? I mean, go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Well, you know, I have to, I have to ask, I would agree with you. I mean, again, I don't, I don't have any knowledge, and that doesn't mean they haven't, but we don't have any information of what they've accomplished. And that's not a criticism, it's just an inquiry, because we don't know. And I do see in the bylaws, they have to have an annual meeting, so have they had that? So it just begs the question, and again, I don't question the purpose, but again, I'm just right now a little uncomfortable not knowing what they do, because I don't, I don't have any information to know that one way or the other.
And and it's one thing to be in good standings because you paid your fee.
Right.
But to be in good standing with your bylaws is totally separate.
Right.
And if they have no active board members and they're not having meetings, then that does not make them an actual viable organization. And that's what we need to really consider before we think about adding more money to it. And then, again, looking at the past performance, I had this conversation, talking about this foundation previously, and the two nonprofits that received the money, you know, we have to be be mindful of that, if it's the same two, you know, how does that, what does that look like? And so I would really like to have that background information, talking about the performance, and how, when, and how they've given out money before we move forward with even soliciting a board. And you're right, do we want to continue this?
Right.
You know, based upon historical performance, not just the fact that we would be giving nonprofit, giving funds to our nonprofits, because the Charitable Trust Foundation does that as well, and they do a great job at it, but we want to make sure that we can do a great job in maintaining a functional board that's going to do the work.
And and I totally agree with you on that. So I think the first thing we need to do is get some information from Mr. Greenville on that, and I, another great resource is Michelle. Michelle has, I think, I know, I see you, Michelle. You may have meeting notes or when they met recently. COVID kind of changed the path for so many different organizations, and this was one of them. But Michelle, did, do you know when they've last met?
It's been quite a while since the last time they met, and a lot of their application approvals have just been done via email. So over the next couple of days, I can do a spreadsheet over the last couple of years of who we've given money to, what it's been for, and provide the the last meeting notes. I would say they haven't met in person in two to three years.
Yeah, so probably they did not meet pre-COVID?
No, no.
Last, one of the last times was when the big hairball took place? Did they meet in person, or was that all done?
I think all that, that was all done via emails back and forth.
Okay, so I'm hearing the board, I'm hearing our council here saying that we need the information that you'll provide, and Kevin will provide, to see if this is something we want to move forward with, but we have to have structure.
Oh, yeah, so I think it's going to be very clear whether or not this is viable based on interest on doing this. I mean, of course, we know Mr. Greenville is going to be incumbent to do a great job, but he needs teamwork on this, clearly. I think Councilman Jenkins noted, look, the mission and the goal is worthy, but if there's no interest this time around, I mean, we're not going to obviously be putting aside money towards it. But I think you get the right people, and it can work, but this is a life support situation for the community foundation, and if there's, if there's not going to be adequate teamwork with someone, you know, as as organized and as willing to help as as Mr. Greenville is, if there's no one willing to do that, that's an easy call. And it'd be a shame, based on the mission that it has and the functionality that can be a community driving force to to help, but we're not going to be spinning on our wheels for the next four years.
And 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 Councilman Trolle, you make a great point, because it is an opportunity to really have a diverse but functional community engagement. This is another opportunity for folks to do that. But 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 at the same time, there is the the reality of it, that when you have, Mr. Greenville and Mr. Manuel know this better than I do, but we have federal monies, some, at some point in time, there's going to be an audit, and they're going to want to know how you spent it. And so there has to be documentation and structure and all those things in place before we do that.
Madam Mayor, one last point on it. I don't, I think it's very clear in Councilwoman Bryant Ward, I share the same opinion that she does about this. Essentially, it's been, it's been sloppy, okay, historically speaking, but looks like fresh slate, new people, new ideas, potentially. I don't want a new board to deal with necessarily the sins of the past, but it gives us some guidance as to what we're going to need to allow it to have legitimacy.
Yeah, great. Okay, so we are on a pause until we get some information, and then, I guess, the next step after receiving the information is whether we will see if there's a consensus to move this forward, and then it will be incumbent upon the elected officials to reach out to maybe some potential people that fit into these categories, and see if we can have a good board to move forward with that. So thank you, that's the first one. Now on to number two.
So noted. Our second board, our commission with vacancies, is the Ethics Commission, consists of three members. We currently have one. He has renewed his term, however, the other two, one moved out of the area, and the other one has elected not to continue their service.
How often do they meet?
I have not seen them meet since I've been with the town.
And not, not since I've been here either.
I happen to know, Councilman Jenkins, Ward Four, I happen to know one of the members, and I think he renewed, and I I think he told me they've met once in maybe two to three years.
Okay, so it looks like it just has to be a resident of the town of La Plata? Are there any other, and I read the criteria, I didn't see, I just, someone that's willing to serve. Is there any type of specialty that they need to possess?
Not that I'm aware of, Madam Mayor.
But maybe just ethics?
Maybe they should have some, yes. Ideally.
Sorry, it was there. All right, so the ask is for us to.
Seek two members for the Ethics Commission.
And the only criteria is that they're a resident of the town of La Plata? Is that the only criteria?
I'm sorry, I'm rereading the the terms before I commit someone. All members of the commission should be residents of the town when they are appointed and during their term of office, so yes.
Okay. And then the last one, any other questions on Ethics Board? Okay, the last one is DRB.
Design Review Board requires an appointment of one regular member and one alternate member. This came out of a, just a reshuffling and identifying which terms had been, had expired and had been vacant, basically, over the COVID period. Now that we're becoming more active, it was incumbent on us to refill all the spots on the boards.
So of the two positions, you said one is a, an alternate one is a a permanent one, do they have to have any of the criteria there? It says one might, shall be an owner or manager of a business, one should be a resident, and one should, membership be, Town Council, always, obviously, we have that. Is there any specific qualification they have, other than being a town resident?
And only one of them needs to be a town resident. The other one can be a non-resident with that perhaps has interest in La Plata. But the professional requirements have been met as far as composition, we're just filling out the rest of the vacancies.
Okay. Questions from council? All right, I think we have our marching orders. We need to find some bodies for these. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Brings us to the next item on our agenda, the Developers' Right and Responsibilities Agreement. So months ago, we met with legal to discuss, and to be educated, actually, on what a D R R A is, and think about the legal implications of that. It's on the agenda today so that we can revisit, renew, review it. You all, as new council members, came in at the tail end of what was a rushed document last year. We were not comfortable with it, at least as the the only holdout from last council. I was not comfortable with it, and our town staff was not ready to accept this document that was literally pushed through. So it it needs to be cleaned up, we need to revisit, and we need to review, and and I'm here today to ask you all what your, what your druthers are on this.
So Madam Mayor, we, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Ward Three, we we talked about this early in our tenure as council members, and I think many of us believed in that it, it was not functional the way it was, and we'd asked and walked through it and asked for changes and corrections to be made to the document. What I'm seeing is a document that really doesn't need to be in existence for what we're trying to accomplish. I am not in favor of continuing with it. I don't know when the right time would be to do away with it, because we do have someone or annexation that's currently involved with it, but I don't think there's really is a need to have this document in our our formal government.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, Ward Four. I would just underscore or echo what Councilman Bryant Ward said, I'm really uncomfortable with this. And through the staff, the town manager and Director Harrington, there's been a lot of progress in frankly, having better processes in place. For instance, I know they're developing an adequate public facilities ordinance. We've gone back through Director Stoll and Mr. Greenville and looked at the master of facilities agreement and or the master facilities fees. And now we have an updated school allocation policy that apparently we're reviewing either every six months or every year. So I think, for me, there are some processes in place that gives us perhaps as much or more review and checks and balances on the development process, whether it be a normal development or and or an annexation. So I'm just uncomfortable with it right now. And and just one final point, even though we have school allocation policy, the town of La Plata doesn't fund schools, and we don't build them. So my past experiences with D R, with D R R A, that a lot of them have to do with schools, rightly so, because they're not cheap. But, and so I know Director Harrington, and she can certainly, you know, tell that as well, that, you know, there's a lot of coordination with the Board of Education and the county on that issue. So it's, so but given all that, it just, I'm very uncomfortable right now moving forward with it.
Any other?
I have basic support, Jim Golds, Ward Four, the comments previously made by other council members. We have other procedures in place that probably more than adequately accomplish what that was supposedly attempting to do, and I think it would be a lot easier and more understandable to use what procedures are now being developed.
Councilman Challenger?
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Challenger, Ward Two. I know it probably was necessary at the time to try to streamline a process and communicate that process, but it sounds like we've got something that is going to be more clear for those applicants and to avoid any confusion. I think it's helpful to move on.
Okay, and and one thing is, I don't want to close the door and say we are never ever going to do D R R As, because I think that if there's a good understanding, if there's a good review process and good legislation that is written, it may be beneficial for the applicant as well as the the staff and and council. So this is not to say we will never, ever, ever do this. It's the document that we have in place now, I think that upon hearing you all, I am going to recommend that we don't move forward with keeping that in our code as it is. And consensus, if anybody objects to that, I will hear. All right, so, Mr. Manuel, do you understand the will of the council?
Yes, excuse me, Madam Mayor. I believe the will of the council is for us to draft legislation that will repeal the D R R A section of the town code.
Yeah, and it is.
All right. Very well stated.
It was. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our next, oh, well, here we go. Come on down, Kevin. Come on, Martha. I love it, you get the hot seat. Choose wisely. Oh, that is the hot seat. This one, you wouldn't, see, that was messing with your mind, because really, it's this one right in my eyeline. All right, you guys are on. Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Very likely.
Very likely. Have fun.
Oh, I got it, okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kevin Greenville, Town Treasurer, I'm here with Martha Vess, our accounting manager, and we are here to present the FY 2023 Proposed Budget and Capital Improvement Plan for the town of La Plata. This is our proposed budget document. It does not include our schedule of fees yet, staff is still finalizing that. We intend to discuss that on May 10, and we will have that to you for your review beforehand. This document is not as expansive as our adopted budget document, but this is our working document to work through the budget. The the document was prepared with a lot of input from staff, so I'm very grateful for all of their input and expertise through that. The the town, this is going to be the fourth time we are going for the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. We won it in 2019, and we have continued to win it each year annually, and it just sort of is a nationally recognized award for our budget development and process. The, I think we'd like to start with the town manager's transmittal letter. This letter was prepared by Mr. Manuel, and it highlights the budget process, what is presented in this budget, and if he would like to just go over it and go over the highlights of it.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. I think in years past, we read through the letter, and I think about midway through last year, I believe Councilman Trolender may have rolled his eyes. So in the event of timeliness, and typically, just for our history, usually, this is the only item on the agenda tonight. With the volume of work that we have pushing through the office, we had to stack other items, of course, ahead of this. We do have a closed session scheduled for after tonight's meeting. You all have the document, I'm sure you reviewed, this is sort of, and for the public, this is sort of the Cliffs Notes version, which does not get into the details, you know, it speaks to COVID impacts. You know, it speaks to COVID impacts, CARES Act funding. It speaks to what ARPA as well. The document speaks to the development pressures that we feel as well as trying to, yeah, as part of some of our initiatives that we undertook last year, which includes the class and compensation study, which is currently ongoing, as well as the organizational assessment, which we have returned and we've taken into consideration as part of this process. We will continue that process as I think this correspondence details. We're expecting the class and comp study back early in May, so we'll be able to sort of meld that into this budget as well. So there's certain unknown variables that we're still dealing with, but we, when we get the class and comp, we'll be able to be in a better place, position to sort of tighten certain things up. Also speaks to our revenues. I know councilmen, of course, obviously, our greatest revenue source is property taxes. And the first paragraph speaks to some areas there as well as we get into other property taxes, which we I don't believe we anticipate much change in that. But then the shared income tax talks about the sort of the uncertainty of that depending among the the economy. So I'm sure everyone saw the inflationary numbers today, which weren't great, to say the least, but we hope everyone's income is able to stay consistent. And then we have a paragraph that speaks to highway user revenues, which I know Councilman Jenkins forwarded his communications from M M L today, their legislation. So what was approved is consistent with what you find in the letter as far as the next up through, I think it was that, yeah, fiscal year 2027. So that that information is in place now, or I should say those percentages are in place. Just trying to think, I'm trying to stay out of the out of the capital improvement plan for now and into and the enterprise fund. But you'll you'll notice in this document, one of the major things we're going to see is an increase in staffing. So and I think that is a result of some of the sort of metrics we got back as part of the or not class and comp, but the organizational assessment showing where we were at current staffing levels and where we had needs. So this budget goes in part to address some of those deficiencies, if you will. So I will just go ahead and before Councilman Trolender rolls his eyes on my brief run through. Kevin, is there anything that I missed that you think is highly relevant? And be careful now, I do your performance.
Yeah. No, thank you, Mr. Manuel. I think really this is a expansive budget. I think this is the budget town staff wanted to present in F Y 20, but unfortunately, COVID hit. So we've been dealing with that for the past two years. We took a measured response to COVID-19 and the economic uncertainty surrounding that. I think our initial budget in F Y 20, we reduced it by about 7% with no new positions. And just as we've discussed in a lot of our meetings, the revenue hit was not as severe as anticipated. And we are, you know, looking at just a unique opportunity with this budget with the ARPA funding that we have received. We've been able to really invest in capital projects and there's one-time cost. And that has sort of allowed us to, you know, expand the staffing. We're proposing 15 new positions. That includes general fund and enterprise fund positions. We also, you know, just expenditures, the the numbers in February was an annualized 7.9% increase in the C P I. I think the number today was 8.5. So it is increasing and, you know, we definitely have accounted for that inflation in this and for the next year. And, you know, we that was a long, you know, sort of a view we took in anticipating expenditures. The capital improvement plan is is proposed at about $6.5 million. That includes enterprise fund and general fund amounts. And just real quick, the so looking at it, the proposed general fund budget for F Y 23, it equals approximately $14.7 million, and that represents an increase of $4.3 million or 41%. Now, that includes ARPA money. And I think there is about $2.5 million in ARPA money that is appropriated to the general fund and about another $2.5 million to the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds, which we're not going to discuss today, but they are just a high-level overview, they are increasing almost 5 million or 46%. That's ARPA money, and that is also our USDA loan. We obligated those funds for the expansion of our sewer system, $12.7 million. That was obligated at the end of March. So you guys will be seeing a number of legislation coming for you to authorize those bonds. It's 1.75% interest over 40 years. We were able to get it in April 1st. Interest rates increased significantly through the USDA program. And one, just last thing, I'd like to just go over briefly. We're going to discuss this next week, but, you know, we strive to set sewer rates, water rates, trash rates, recycling rates at the actual cost to deliver services. Fortunately, we have enough working capital on on hand within our enterprise funds to offset some of those costs. Trash and sewer rates are proposed to increase 3%. Recycling rates are proposed to increase 5%. And water rates are proposed to increase 7.5%. You know, that that really, looking at it, all of those numbers probably should be a little bit higher, but we're offsetting that by working capital, and we're not sacrificing any long-term financial solvency. I'd just like to point out in the water rates included in sort of our rate modeling is also the long-term outlook of we're going to eventually have to buy water, surface water at some point. Surface water is extremely, much more extremely expensive than groundwater. So that is, we did take that into consideration when when rate modeling for our utility rates. I guess I'd just like to stop and see if you guys have any questions as we move forward and just go into a little bit more detail within the budget.
Madam Mayor, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Ward three. So I, great work. Have to look through some more of the details of it, but did we ever get any information back about looking at a retirement plan? Didn't hear anything about that. Want to make sure that we haven't, you know, just dropped that.
So we we are going through the class and comp study. They are looking at as a part of that benefits. Yes, we are working with N F P, who is our health broker. They are doing some actuarial work to give us some options on what the cost would be for health insurance in retirement, and they are going to do that at no cost to us, which is a very nice of them. We also received back the law enforcement officers pension system actuarial study. We are looking at that. We are reviewing that. Unfortunately, they sent it, I think the document was published March 21st, and I think I got it like March 27th. So they gave it to us pretty late in the game of where we had liked to have gotten it. But we are, when we get back the class and comp study, we're going to view everything, you know, as a whole and incorporate it into this budget process and into this budget discussion. Okay. So just, oh, sorry, Dave.
No, I was late, sorry. Dave Jenkins, Ward four. I have a whole series of questions, but I'm not going to belabor the point tonight. I'm assuming that we individually, we can send questions to you.
Absolutely. Anytime.
Because I went through it, and I just have a series of questions and rather than this. And honestly, this is a working document, so it's going to be changing. And I'm thank you for bringing it up, the law enforcement actuary study, because that was I was going to ask that question. And I think it's important that you mentioned that these studies, all three of them, have been incorporated into the budget. I think it's important that the public know that, that it's based on some factual information. And then I see that the strategic plan has been weaved into this, but I guess I'm a little have we ever approved that, the actual strategic plan? Or did I miss something?
I would have to go, I would have to go back and check. I thought.
I mean, I'm saying it's a good thing, but I'm just trying to remember whether we actually put our stamp.
Well, you will be approving it if you approve the budget.
Well, there may be some other questions that some of us may have those. So if you don't mind.
Yeah, I can, I can research that. And I.
I'm going to probably compile, I am going to compile a bunch of questions and send them to you, okay? And yeah, no, I know you are. But but again, to echo the other comment, I appreciate all the work, because I know this has been kind of a lot of pressure and a lot of workload, so thank you for the efforts.
Yes, I do want to echo, well, put together. It's visually stimulating on like many budget documents I've seen over the years. It's very helpful how you've laid it out. One question I had is based on the amount of new positions that we're budgeting for. That's not solely based on the idea of or the projected growth of the town. But is it is it also based on the fact that we had our our study with, what was that group calling again? I'm trying to find it.
Point H R.
Right. So which found that the town actually was understaffed as it is. Can you speak to the need for the amount of positions, the 15 new positions, and how that's how that's going to be helpful for a town to operate for a residence?
Sure. I think the organizational study, you know, sort of said what we all thought and knew from just our experiences is that the town, we are understaffed, and that's what this budget is trying to do. I think more just 15 new positions is just getting us up to staffing levels that we need currently, and that's F Y, you know, 22 numbers. So we are still lagging a little bit behind in in what the organizational study is doing. Now, what we're trying to do is not look at it based off population, because that's very difficult to do. We're trying to look at it based off construction and housing starts. So that's what we're going to continue to do. You know, these positions are spread out over the general fund and the enterprise fund. That's part of the the rate increases as well is a lot of the positions are within our operations department, which, you know, the organizational study did show was very understaffed. And we have tried to follow that book, their recommendations, and I think most new positions follow their recommendations. I think maybe we just have some slight variations, you know, just with job titles and what we intend to do with those, which, you know, the consultants at Point H R did an excellent job, but, you know, they they don't know our organization as well as we do. So we did tweak some things that are in there and some positions.
Right. I appreciate you taking the recommendations and filtering it through our town specific needs because, I mean, when they came back with that study, the amount of people they said that we already needed was kind of staggering and what we would need. So it seems like a happy medium as to what can keep us efficient. I'll probably send you some follow-up questions with regards to some of these increases, the sort of water rates and recycling and making sure that, you know, I guess for now, I think it's helpful for the residents to know that we're not we're not raising water rates, right, to to supply 15 new positions. I think you stated that, but I think it's helpful to know.
Right, yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Greenville, I have a question as well. In the event that those 15 positions are not filled during the fiscal year, will that because I know that with operations and with the police, they have a very hard time nationwide. It's not unique to our municipality recruiting. Will that money be absorbed into the general fund? Will it be still earmarked so it will carry over for the next year? Because we obviously have a need. It's been identified not only by staff here but by professional corporation that has done our assessment. So just wondering what happens to that funding.
Mayor James, a point of clarification. Do you mean from this fiscal year or the next fiscal year, F Y 23, to the following year, F Y 24? Well, the money is not, when we adopt the budget, it is only for July 1 through June 30th, so we would have to relook at this in next year's budget. When we positional budget, we do take into account that there could be some vacancies, and we do our best to, you know, estimate benefits, a big, you know, variable in positional budgeting is our health insurance. You know, some, we can have somebody come on and they can cost us $0 because they don't elect our health insurance, or they can have a family of five, and, you know, they cost us almost $30,000. So we do try within positional budgeting to account for those and those variances. But yeah, if a position remains unfilled, that money is, you know, available to be spent. You know, our budgetary level of control is at the department level, not at the, you know, the individual line item level. So it is in there for the departments to spend, but anything that's not spent is going to go back into our unassigned fund balance and can be appropriated in the next year.
Thank you for that. All right, any other questions?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Greenville. You said you were working through the class and comp study. So we've got it back now, essentially?
No, we have not received it back. We are at the point where the consultants are have received most of their responses. That's the hardest part is getting other municipalities to not just give us information, but we're asking them a lot, you know, to give detailed, you know, what do they give in health insurance? What is their retirement and those sorts of things? So that's what their responses were supposed to be back today. I think we've, I think we're going to receive 15 municipalities. We would have liked to receive a little bit more, but I think we've received good quality comparables to our organization.
Thank you.
On page 36, our overview of debt services. Am I missing something on how it appears? Should it be the bottom line 2,000? It says 4,000. Where's the other two, unless you're taking it from above and?
That was a mistake, Mayor, and I apologize for that, but I'll make a note and correct it.
You just wanted to put one in there for me, right? All right, good.
And just if we could just, I guess, continue through this and then get to the departments. Just if you look at positionally, we are asking for a point four more positions in legislative. That adds a full-time administrative aide to the department. Within finance, we're proposing a procurement officer. That was recommended in the organizational study. I think without ARPA money, I don't think we could justify adding that position, but I think with ARPA, we do need to add it now. And hopefully, in three or four years, we will be at a point where, you know, the position will continue even without the ARPA funding. And we are asking for a just general accountant to help out to meet the needs in the department. Within the planning department, we are asking for an administrative aide. I think we all know the level of work within planning. The police are, we're proposing 2.6 new positions. That includes an administrative, part-time administrative aide, two, point one for a cadet, two new corporals for the investigative unit. And then there are some reclassifications, adding some promotions for the compliance coordinator and another lieutenant. Within operations, I'm not going to go through each one, but we are proposing 10 new positions. This increases our F T count from F Y 22, from 72.4 all the way up to 87.4, 15 new positions. This, our strategic plan that we did last calendar year, we did try to incorporate those, our goals into our budget process and what we're trying to achieve with our with our And just a quick overview, the budget calendar, next week, we're going to do the the enterprise funds. At the business meeting on the 26th, we're going to do our public hearing and public comment on the constant yield tax rate. We'll introduce the ordinance for the F Y 23 tax rates. At this time, we're proposing no increase in the property tax rate. It remains flat at 32 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. On May 10th, we'll have a work session on the fee schedule, and we will have a special meeting to adopt the ordinance for the F Y 23 tax rates. Why we do that before the adoption of the budget is we need to get those numbers to the state and the county, who the county does bill our real property tax rates. We'll have a word. We'll have a work session on May 17 to discuss any outstanding budget items. And at the end of May, we'll introduce and hold public hearings on all the ordinance we need to adopt. And then we have a special meeting on June 7 to adopt the the financial plan budget and the FY 23 fee schedule.
Can we go back to personnel? I have two questions on that.
Yes.
I do not see, and again, I may not be reading this correctly. I only see one officer for the hospital. Did we are we not budgeting for another officer for the hospital? And I know the way the M O U it might be different, but.
I would like Chief Schenner speak to that.
I think that's in the hospitals. Black right now, Mayor, you know, we sent the adjusted M O U over and it's been radio silent since it's gone over. And as written, we would put a position in there with a second position was supposed to be cost neutral to the town.
Okay, so it wouldn't show up here because there's no cost, there's no impact on the town?
We would put it in the budget because those funds are ultimately, we're going to receive them from the hospital and pay them to the officer. So we will have to account for it. I just believe that we felt where we're at with the hospital, just to leave it off the budget. And if it comes through, we can always amend it and for those funds.
Dollar for dollar.
Okay. And then the other thing is on the community promotions position, not to point out any errors. Is that supposed to be FY 23 or FY 22 twice because you're stuck in? Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I want a perfect product.
Mayor James, that is another minor typo that I apologize for.
Just because I was looking at that. Don't give me that. Yeah, it really was. Okay.
Kevin, two years. Six hundred pages.
I guarantee you when you sit, you do not forget that thing. Those things will happen.
So. I just want you to feel better about yourself on that. So you're welcome.
No, I appreciate it, Mayor. I will. I will make those corrections.
Thank you.
And, you know, just pages 34 onward, just an overview of our revenues and expenditures, overview of our debt service. We do have one of our loans is expiring next fiscal year. But the business type debt, it does not reflect the new USDA money. We just got that obligated. So I will update that with sort of some estimates on a just because, you know, we're going to close. It's two loans. We're going to close each of them. So it's just sort of projecting out when the debt's going to hit and how much we 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 have, we will have to pay. There's an overview of fund balance. And just continuing on, this is just sort of some budgetary overview as we continue through the budget. There's a description of general fund revenues and then a breakdown of our major revenue sources. And I I just encourage Mayor and Council to read those and just let me know. I will say one thing about the real property tax, just due to our projected growth. We are using a growth escalator when we're projecting that this year. Feel comfortable doing that just because the state's projections have historically now for a number of years, just not been enough. So we are escalating that and it is helping us, you know, fund some of these new positions in the general fund.
And Mr. Greenville, under human resources, you have a negative 64%. I can justify a lot of those, you know, with the police increasing with 29%. I get that. But could you speak to that discrepancy of 64%? And also to, which I'm hoping that it's good news, with the I T? I think you're adding another position, but just to justify that.
For human resources, that is the organizational study and the class and comp coming off. And in I T, we have moved our I T consultant is now working four, four times a month or I guess weekly. So and also their their cost is going up. I mean, we're just seeing that with with all of our vendors with this just historic inflation and uncertainty.
Great. Council had any other questions?
Thanks, Mayor. Again, Councilman Jenkins word for you asked some of the questions I was going, but I just want to follow up on the I T part as well. This is probably going to get down the weeds, but that's okay. So will it be funds to update the website?
Yes, those are appropriated in this budget.
Okay.
As part of ARPA funding.
And then there was. So community promotion is flat that there's no increase. I'm curious because could some other functions be shifted out of legislative to community? Because legislative, they do keep it, you know, keep it playing it beautiful. They have other lot of functions going on in legislative. And I'm just for discussion for future discussion, is there a way to beef up community with other functions within that particular? I know Colleen does a great job, but maybe this, maybe they need more help. Maybe you could shift programs out of legislative to there.
Well, Councilman Jenkins, I think sometimes this is just we're looking at these year over year, you know, can be deceptive. And you got to sort of get in the weeds on them because the the big thing is that we had some Main Street Maryland grant funding in last year's budget. And it is not in this year's budget. And that is why you're seeing that accounts for about $87,000 of the the decrease in community promotion. So we're not, we're not really decreasing it. I think another thing is we had money in there for some native plantings and some other items and including Christmas decorations. And those have just been reduced a little bit, and that's another $35,000. So I think that's why you're seeing it. We're not really cutting community promotion. It's increasing. It's just those year to year fluctuations of of grant money and just some one time expenses we did last or this current fiscal year.
Hey, any other questions from council? Okay.
And that is is really what I would like to highlight. I leave it up to council how how you guys would prefer to proceed if you want to go through each department, hear from department directors or if. Ever you'd like to proceed, I'll leave it up to you guys.
Council, have you had the opportunity to digest this 182 page document? And are you able to ask, you know, formulate questions for this evening? Or would you prefer to follow your questions through Mr. Manuel so that he can bring it to the proper department head? What would or is there any outstanding one that you have to have answered this evening?
Madam Mayor, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Ward three. I think when we had the budget retreat and we heard from the different department heads to talk about what their needs were and they were able to explain it and it makes sense. And we voted to move forward with those things by consensus. I think we don't need to go back through and hear from the department heads, just making sure that everything that we agree to is, you know, in the budget. And I think that's going to, you know, take some more time, you know, we got it not too long ago. And so 182 pages is going to take a minute, you know. But looking at the numbers is, you know, for me, you know, and I'm a numbers person. So I'm pretty comfortable with how the budget is moving forward.
Madam Mayor, again, Councilman Jenkins word for some of my questions have already been answered through other comments and questions and by Mr. Greenville. So that's, that's great. But but I still want to be able to go through and maybe follow some questions to the town manager if that's appropriate.
And that's.
Because I have some other questions that are really specific.
That's what I would encourage.
Some other related issues.
Absolutely. I would encourage each of members of council to really go through, digest what this document is. And any questions, just bring it to Mr. Manuel.
And so what is the deadline you want us to give you so we don't drag it out?
I'd say midnight tonight.
Okay. Good luck with that, but go ahead.
Yeah, well, we will be, you know, discussing the enterprise funds next Tuesday. So that would give us an opportunity to maybe answer some of your questions. So anytime, you know, prior to any before Friday would be great.
Okay.
Give us a day or two in the office before, because I'm sure the next week you're going to have questions about the the enterprise funds and the capital improvement plan. And, you know, one thing I wanted to state is one of the positions Kevin and I considered was, I know it had some was gathering some steam at our budget retreat was economic development. And in talking to Kevin, we sort of valued the procurement position because of the situation we are in with ARPA and not having a dedicated position for procurement in the federal, the amount of federal funds that are going to flow through this building. And as you mentioned previously, Councilman Jenkins, the potential of audits, federal audits, which typically come with it. We valued that position. But we did talk about trying to put some of the sort of behind the scenes things in place for a future economic development position on what that's going to look like. Working on things like job description, a lot of times economic development personnel work. The town may want to consider an economic development committee that they may not answer to. They would answer to me, but they would work through. So those are things we're going to investigate this next fiscal year and maybe have a program, a capital or not a capital, but an economic development program that would come to council for your review and input as well as hopefully a blessing at the end. And then maybe we'll be in a position at that time to go out and try to solicit an economic development director. But I think it will be beneficial because I believe the class and compensation study will also recommend probably salaries, things of that nature for the positions we've identified through the organizational assessments that we won't be sort of punching blindly into the into the night.
So I'm heartened by that, your comments. So thank you for that. And I just ask for, I guess, for future discussion, given the fact that in this current proposed budget, there's an increase in staff. Does that suggest some a more robust or more enhanced H R function? Because we're going to be going close to what 80 or 89 folks? And that suggests to me that, again, not criticism, but it just seems like that that could be pretty overwhelming.
Yeah, I think the values, the full time H R position would be.
Or you're farming out whatever, but there's some options that maybe we could look at.
I think what Kevin and I have talked about looking at, you know, I don't want to say outsourcing, but there are a lot of H R outsourcing potential and it may be for training. A lot of times municipal, well, a lot of times the your insurance provider for the municipality will have different programs. And I think we've even experienced or investigated some of the programming that Legit has. I think they have what's called a university where you can go online, you can do training. So maybe, you know, having someone dedicated to that and sort of to stand up a program for our employees to take a more of a human resources approach. Because, you know, currently communities of our size are more personnel than they are human resources. But we want to develop and, you know, we one of the things we do have, it's probably underutilized, is the reimbursing higher education. So we could push those things, which is a lot of programming we could push to sort of maximize our potential within our current employees, not just our future employees. So that's something that we'll continue to investigate over this next budgetary year and hopefully be in a better position. Honestly, I'd like to see some rooftops. And I think that will dictate how we how we go. But as you, you know, point out, our ranks are going to increase with the adoption of this budget if it's approved. And we need to be prepared. And maybe that means more dedication of more of our existing staff to those sort of functions. Because Michelle Miner, of course, our assistant town manager, she takes on a lot of responsibilities as well as Kevin's office with human resources, payroll, things of that source. So it's going to take more, more of a concentrated effort moving forward.
So I applaud you, Mr. Manuel and Kevin, for, you know, actually taking into consideration the recommendation from SharePoint. I think that was mean for us to go through that exercise and dismiss it would have been just to me horrible. But you didn't do that. But I am going to say, I don't believe that we should continue to share H R functions across staff. I think we need a dedicated H R person to manage our H R functions. There are compliance laws that go with H R. And if we don't have a professional that does it, I think we run our run a risk of getting ourselves in trouble. And I don't think that we can continue to, you know, burden staff with multiple roles that are taxing roles. I mean, if it's, you know, a small thing, you know, yeah, we can take on additional. But the H R is a huge function and it has a lot of laws and regulations that go with it. And I think we get ourselves in trouble when we try and allow for folk who are not trained in that area to do the work. And I think we need to be mindful and really, really take it into consideration to get an H R licensed professional. I think that's just really imperative in my mind, based upon some of the things we've experienced over the past year. I don't support us continuing to have one person do this piece and another person do that piece without having the regulations and compliance laws that go along with it.
That is an excellent point. And I think that we have grown with us growing as with 15 physicians, that's quite a bit. The concerns are H R. Another concern is not so much with the police or with public works because they may have the space. The police are getting a little tight in there. But public works, I think that they would be okay with that. But where are we going to put the other employees? Are we going to have them do a shared space and have it virtual that, you know, two days a week, somebody works virtually and, you know, that kind of thing? So that's a concern that I have as well. And to have, and I appreciate you asking for us to have our comments by Friday. I'm going to give you Friday off, so maybe we can push it to Monday. Do you think that'd be okay, unless you really want to work on Friday?
I was you were the ones working, not me. I was collecting.
Yeah, so if it's okay to do it over the weekend and on Monday, as long as it's first thing Monday.
I have, I just got to put them in the right format.
Of course you do.
If I could just, I know, I could underscore what Councilman Brian Ward said. And the other flip side of that issue about H R professional, it also is great to retain employees that are here if they feel like they're in an organization that really cares about them and has that function that operates. And it's frankly certified professional. Thank you.
So looking at the budget, so we can break this down in piecemeal. If there are any questions, comments, concerns, what page do we go up to for doing up to Monday? So we can make sure that we address the right.
So the enterprise funds start on. Let me go to the table of contents, right? I spent a lot of time creating that. I put hyperlinks on it. I don't know if you guys noticed that, but so the enterprise funds start on page 112. So if we're going to be doing that next week, that's going to be page 112 through 139. That is our sanitation sewer, water and stormwater fund. The capital improvement plan starts on 100 and page 140. That encompasses both our general fund and our enterprise fund. So I would really just recommend that, you know, you guys get just your general questions in. I mean, this is going to be a continuous process. I mean, we're going to meet again next week. We're going to meet the first work session in May. And then we also have another planned work session just for any outstanding budget items. So, you know, I think we need to really have, you know, everything finalized, you know, within within the first couple of weeks of May. So but.
Okay.
So I would just like to say, do not send questions about punctuation.
No, I like, you know, I.
Spell check, please. I'm sorry, it's the teacher in me. I will try.
It's all right. Mayor, you can just send those to me directly. So we'll.
She's pointing out one of my ears right now.
Right here. That it was. Oh, oh, no, you've corrected it.
Okay. We're good.
No.
I made no error.
Yes, you did, right here. There's the star.
And Mayor James, you have requested, I think, twice, just some something in the budget book showing what was proposed and what was cut out. Fortunately, we were able to fund every position and primarily every request from department directors. There might have been just some very minute things, but overall, everything was funded. And I think the only thing, you know, that that has been requested relate to pay and benefits. And we can evaluate that once we get the class and comp study and the presentation from Paypoint H R.
That's great news. And I love that ARPA is going to get some of the much needed, I'm not going to say toys, but toys for operations and for the police department. That's so needed to do their job properly. So that's a blessing in disguise. All right. All right, any other questions? So as I recap it, pages 1 through 112. If you have any questions, send them to Brent Monday morning, by Monday morning, since we don't want him looking at his work on Friday. And then on Tuesday, we will go through page 112 through 139 on the enterprise. Does that sound good? And I will refrain from doing punctuation wrongs. All right, anything else you have for us? Fantastic. All right, see, Martha, you can come back again. That wasn't so bad, was it?
Of course not.
All right. And I would like to officially welcome you to our family here. It's a little crazy, but we get things done, so. Great. Okay, I guess we're done with you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. All right, we're going to matters of information.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, I just included the new nice Middleton Bridge replacement project slide deck on the agenda at the request of a certain council person who was present for, maybe you can speak to that. It was the, what was the organization? Tom Rion. Mayor James, I believe you were there as well?
I wasn't at this one, but I usually am in attendance to those and it's fascinating.
Not just for our information, but also the public. So if the public would like to know where we are, I was amazed. I had to go over it two weeks ago. And the last time I went over the old, they were still driving pilings. And now they have deck work up in, was it December? I think they're scheduled-
December 15th is what their target date is, so that's exciting.
Then I think we will also be attempting to get the project manager for Skanska, maybe to come give a presentation to the council and the public as we move along and they get farther along in the project, maybe sometime in the next few months. So we will, we'll reach out to them and see their availability and hopefully they'll be back and can update us further on all the good work they're doing because I think they're on time and on budget is my understanding, so.
That's fantastic.
So then I can go from this side to the other because I'm going there.
Yeah, this bridge looks a lot safer. I tell you, if you get in an accident on the bridge now, it's closed down in both directions. So this one will be a, two lanes going both ways, so that is very nice. All right.
Madam Mayor, I know this is just for information, not only, but I just want to bring up two issues regarding the bridge. One, this is being built by the total authority. However, if you look in the FY '21 to FY '26 Maryland Consolidated Transportation Plan, there's a line item for a US South 301 study that goes from the bridge all the way up to Route 50 to look at transit and transportation improvements. And at one time, so now there's actually money, not a whole lot, but there's some money in there because I think there's gonna be some traffic increase because now it's gonna be a four-lane bridge, not only two lanes. So I'm glad that's in the state's budget, transportation budget, but frankly, it's only a study. But so there could be, not to be pessimist, but there could be some significant issues about intersections, not only through La Plata, but all through all of Charles County. So I just want to raise that issue. And then I'm sure Director Harrington knows that, she already has done this, but I was looking at, each year, the MDOT gets priority letters from each of the jurisdictions. And I know La Plata is included in Charles County. And the last one I read was a year ago, this past March. And there's a bunch of stuff in there about La Plata. So what does the next letter do to the county for the MDOT priority? Do we know that yet?
I know that Jamie and Kenner that we're consulting with, meeting Hunt, had reached out to me and asked for the last letter, so I'm not sure if these work on that.
Yeah, I can follow up with Jamie because I think sometimes, I think we, unfortunately, I think our requests for the last two years have been identical because they didn't address any of our requests from the prior year.
Yeah.
And maybe we need to reevaluate our requests, obviously, on a year-to-year basis.
Yes.
But, and then, so, we can get with Jamie to see if he has a timetable. Because the county, I think it usually goes to the county and the county incorporates ours into their-
That's correct.
Okay. Because I would certainly concur for us to look at it again and update it. And I would include the reference to the Maryland Transportation Consolidated Plan about the 301 study because of the bridge. And then again, push, and again, I know this is a pet peeve and I'm probably a broken record, but I'm still gonna say it. Look at, again, priority to fix Charles Street and have pedestrian safety and other related issues for La Plata. Because we seem to be, not anybody's fault, but we just seem to be fall by the wayside. And frankly, I find it irritating that we have these issues and thank God, no one's been hurt. But that doesn't mean we have a need here for that, for that kind of safety improvements for Charles Street. Because there's a publication that talks about, the state did it a number of years ago, that when Main Street is your main street, well, that is. And so-
That's right.
It just-
Yeah, I can invite Ms.-
Because I hear a lot of people talk to us about that.
Yeah, I'll invite Ms. Harrington to the table just to brief you guys. I know it's matters of information, so we will inform you. I think I included a brief section in our weekly report. And I'm sure Janine probably did too because her frickin' weekly report's four pages long. But Janine and I did have the pleasure of doing a walking tour, we'll call it, a road diet inspection with a consultant with State Highway. So we are looking at Route 6 for pedestrian safety, as well as how the existing, I guess, lane configuration, if there's improvements that can be made to that corridor. We walked from 301 down to Willow Lane, if I remember correctly. And it was 32 degrees that day, but I was, no one noticed. So that is a work in progress. I was very impressed with the consultant. The State Highway had a representative there as well. So we're hopeful that we'll get some, some good information back.
Well, again, I'm heartened to hear that and I certainly applaud that effort. So the S H A rep, was that the District Engineer Office at Annapolis? Okay.
Same gentleman that was active in our comprehensive plan review.
Yes, David Rogers.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And they requested our commentary, so we took field notes. There were several intersections that we pointed out that have been problematic.
Yep.
And we did send them our recommendations and issue areas that we noted, especially around the hospital with pedestrian crossings, talking about the flashing beacons for the pedestrians that we've been looking at, as well as just some site triangle issues. Some of those we can probably take care of on the town side. So I've already briefed our manager of inspections and Inspector One to start going out and having conversations with those that are directly along Charles Street to see if we can correct some of the minor issues on our end. They might not necessarily be a code violation, but for signage that may be in the site triangle where it's difficult to see, there's a brick wall that makes it very difficult to see.
When you mean on that one?
Yes, so we're gonna be reaching out to those property owners directly, letting them know that we did walk the corridor with S H A and note the issues that we found and see if we can get them to help us out and correct those. Otherwise, we'll wait for the State Highway to come back with their recommendations and kind of proceed from there.
Yeah, we also made them aware of the new dynamic with a new library being placed.
And now the Heritage Green and that new intersection construction going on?
Yes.
Yes, with the proposed bike, shared bike path. Yeah, we've walked through all of that.
We have a lot of moving parts and we wanted to make sure they were aware of everything that was going on that may not show up in every place. So that he could take all that into consideration and sort of developing a, obviously, a more safe environment for both the driving public as well as the walking pedestrians. Because, you know, he was, were times where, you know, you didn't feel safe standing on the sidewalk.
Well, and again, not to be negative, but I happened to see an article today that pedestrian fatalities, first half of this year are already up again. I mean, it's, and so, you know, all I'm suggesting, and I appreciate you guys being proactive about this, is that, you know, we don't want to be in a position where we're gonna react to something. We need, from my perspective, we just need to be proactive and frankly, we just gotta bug them.
But I also think-
Politely, but bug them.
Yeah, I also think it's very important because State Highway, unless they're actually on-the-ground workers, they're not out there, they're not experiencing the issues. So as we were walking with them, you know, stopping at Washington Avenue and Charles Street, and they said, are there any issues with this side or with this intersection? Like, well, it's not too many major issues. The infrastructure is there. I said, but a lot of people don't want to follow the arrows. And just so happened, a truck of a certain employment pulled up and went, you know, almost through the intersection and the light turned red and they had to back up. So I said, it's more driver error.
That was great.
The humor was not lost on him. But to actually have them out there and to physically walk and see the issues firsthand was very helpful. At the, another example is at the hospital and the crosswalk there for employees. I stood right where the, you know, pedestrian would be at the very edge of the sidewalk and there's a telephone pole. If you're a car coming up the road, I said, go stand on the other side of that telephone pole, see if you can see me. Don't, I mean, I know, might be a little bit fluffy today, but, but it does block the view of the pedestrian stepping out into the road. So if a pedestrian isn't being careful and a driver isn't being careful, that's where you can have those fatalities. So that was very important for them to see firsthand.
That's wonderful.
I like to show that because I cross it every day and it's scary. And even if people see you, they're not gonna stop for you, you know, so.
So I would just say, not that you have anything else to do, but I would just request that you just periodically give us some update when there's a change or perhaps you need assistance to, quote, bug them.
Yeah, we'd have to, we need to follow up to find out what the process is gonna look like. Because I don't think that was clearly established, whether there would be public input. A lot of times, they sort of, there may not be public input. So we wanna, we'd like to get the consultant in town to present to you guys any of their findings. And so we will definitely push for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to future work session topics. We've got several on there. You guys can read that. And so that's what we are looking forward to in the future, which brings us to new business. We have a reason to go into closed session, so I will entertain a motion from someone to go into closed session. And right after.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion. We go into closed session to statutory authorities for the closed sessions, the State Governor Article 3-305B7, to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, lease agreement.
Do, that was well done.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? I will do a roll call. So all in favor, if you're in favor, yea. If not, nay. Councilwoman Goldsmith?
Yea.
Councilwoman Trolinger?
Yea.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yea.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yea.
And Mayor James is a yea. That brings us to public comment. If we have anybody that would like to speak this evening, I ask that you state your name, your address, whether you're in the incorporated town limits, and please limit it to three minutes. Do I have anybody online or in person that would? All right, hearing none. I move to adjourn this meeting and we will meet you right over into closed session. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much for a great meeting.
7:47. Should I tell Jay, everybody take a little break? Is that all right? Try to get, say eight o'clock, is that good?
Do you want to take a 14-minute break or are you ready to go on?
I'm ready. I'm ready. How about a-
Five-minute break. No, you can let your lungs rest.
No, I'm not worried about my lung. I'm worried about my bladder.
Go, go.
All right, let me, I'm gonna try to text Jay first.
Yeah.
I'll get Kelly. Because they're the one who have to bring them in.
Did you see that Gilbert Gottfried passed away? You know that comedian?
No.
Gilbert Gottfried. Did you see that he passed away? 67, he had his own mom's illness. That's sad. Yeah, I don't know what the illness was, but my sisters were texting that. It's like 67, that's sad. Yes. You know what? Albert should be at, it was on, it's at the attorney's. It moved from his desk. I said, you are not getting a letter of support from me until it moves. So it's with their attorney. Thank you. Yeah, so I did write one for them. So I will see him at Rotary tomorrow and he, last week, he had told me that it was up with the attorney. So we'll see. It'll happen. I am confident it will happen. Yeah. No, that's why I was surprised not to see it, but I didn't know since it was a wash if it would be in, you know, money coming in, money coming out.
He's been fighting the suspect inside the-